Good morning. I'd like to bring the meeting of the House and Children and Youth Committee to order. Just a reminder that this is being recorded, so keep your cellphone silent. And if you're speaking, please make sure your microphone is lit. It's a green button that will go on. Thank you. We will begin with committee member introductions. If everyone would share your name and legislative district. I'm State Rep. Gina McNeil, Majority Chair of Children and Youth from Lehigh County. We'll start to my left with Representative Boyd.
Oh, sorry. Representative Heather Boyd, 163rd District in Delaware County.
Good morning. Representative Gina H. Curry, 164th Legislative District in Delaware County.
Good morning. Representative Darisha Parker, 198th District, Philadelphia County.
Good morning, Chair Clunk, and I represent the southwestern corner of York County.
And I'm Representative John Schlegel, representing the 101st Legislative District in the heart of Lebanon County.
Brenda Pugh, from the 120th District in Luzerne County.
Malu McKenzie, the 131st District, part of Northampton County, part of Lehigh County, and part of Montgomery County.
Good morning. Joe Hogan from Bucks County.
Good morning. Gary Day from Lehigh County, 187th District.
Good morning. Jamie Walsh, the 117th District, Luzerne County.
Good morning. Nancy Gans, I have the 152nd District in Montgomery County.
Good morning. Melissa Serrato from 151st District, Montgomery County.
Good morning, everybody. Ben Sanchez from Montgomery County. I'm not on the committee, but one of the prime sponsors of the bill before us today.
Thank you. The purpose of today's hearing is to discuss House Bill 350, sponsored by Representatives Ben Sanchez. House Bill 350 would establish the Uniform Parentage Act. Chair Clunk, do you have any remarks?
Do we have to take that?
No.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate our testifiers coming today. This is a huge bill and a big issue that I think all of us are trying to wrap our head around because it's an evolving area of the law. So I look forward to hearing from our testifiers today to answer our questions. And I know that one hour is not going to be enough for us to answer all of those, so hopefully all of you will be available later as we continue to work through this bill to answer any questions we might have. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair Clunk. Today, we're joined today by the following testifiers. Honorable Tara Toohill, Luzerne County Court of Common Pleas. Rebecca Levin-Niack Esquire, who represents the law firm of Hangly, Aronchik, Siegel, Pudlin, and Schiller. Darren Holst Esquire, who represents the Pennsylvania Bar Association. And Dr. Andrea Braverman, Clinical Professor of Obstetrics and Gynecology and Clinical Professor of Psychiatry and Behavioral Medicine at Thomas Jefferson University. Thank you for joining us today. Members, please hold your questions until the end. Once all testifiers have finished, we will open the floor for questions and answers. Finally, we will conclude with closing remarks from the prime sponsor of House Bill 350, Representative Sanchez. We will open the floor to our testifiers. Your Honor, you may begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to both Chairwomen McNeil and Chair Clunk. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today to provide remarks regarding House Bill 350. It's an honor to come in front of this committee in particular. But this committee, now as a county judge and member of the Pennsylvania Judicial Branch, as a county judge in family court, I'm from Luzerne County. I'm here today to provide input as to case law and common law, where the lack of statutory law creates debate as to what makes someone a parent in Pennsylvania. So as a disclaimer, my remarks today are my own, and they're not a reflection of any opinion that should be perceived as instructive as to how the judiciary wishes for the legislature to act, as that's not the role of the judiciary. The information I'm providing to the committee, including thoughts, cases, statute, and rules, are in connection with matters in which I have acquired personal knowledge and expertise only in the last three years, because three years ago I was sitting on this committee in your seats. So it is only with that small amount of judicial experience that I've had so far, which is thousands of cases, but still only three years as a judge. And so the opinions, we have, in Pennsylvania, the judges for each county are part of a conference of state trial judges. So they are allowed to put forward, with the approval of AOPC, a position on a piece of legislation. And so we have not done that yet through the conference. And we've also not done that through the Family Law Committee that we have within that conference. And I think a lot of that is just because the judiciary is rarely involved in opinions on legislation and kind of just hesitant to put anything forth. And also, there are some other bills. I was just here before the Judiciary Committee, the House Judiciary Committee, with regard to the 16 factors, and we testified regarding that, which we do have a position on with the Pennsylvania Conference of State Trial Judges. So parentage cases, or cases seeking a solution to the problem of who is a parent, they come before the court in the form of biology. So I will have, for biology, we have parents who are filing petitions even before the child is born. They're in custody court in front of me filing petitions to establish paternity. I have disestablishments of paternity. So that's through parenting through DNA or biology. Then there's adoption. Then there's equity, which we still do have a marital presumption of parentage in Pennsylvania that is alive and well in a lot of our case law. And also, parentage by estoppel, which is another, it's another common law that we have here, where if you've been a parent and you've been acting as a parent, then you cannot just withdraw that. So those are a lot of the majority of cases that come in front of me. And then today, more of what's being addressed with contract-based parentage with children who are born using art or artificial reproductive technology. And then, this, in the month of March, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court just came out with a bright line rule for a new doctrine of intent-based parentage. And that's a really interesting case that we, as county judges, were following, where it was a case specifically with artificial reproductive technology. And two mothers, or one was petitioning to be a mother, and the other one was the biological mother. And there was the use of artificial reproductive technology, and they were a married couple in Philadelphia. So it's a very widely-known case of Glover v. Junior. And so definitions could, definitions like the ones in the bill, could add clarity by crafting language. The legislature could provide clarity for judges, lawyers, and litigants. Language could potentially reduce the lengthiness of these legal battles. For example, in that Glover v. Junior case, that case went from the trial court county judge making a decision, then it was appealed to Superior Court, and then it went all the way up to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. So it was, I think the child is almost three years old, and the ruling was in favor of the other spouse that was the non-biological parent, so that she does have parentage, but the child is now three years old. And she's never met her son, who now is her child. So that is going to be a custody case most likely. And so there's a lot of time and resources that every time we get appealed, it goes up to the Superior Court. We have to write a 35-page, 40-page opinion in response to our initial decision. So there's a lot of time, and we have extremely full dockets. So having definitions in law could help the judges in making decisions. Also, language could potentially afford children more economic stability. For example, defining who a legal parent is of a child can ultimately determine health insurance coverage, inheritance rights in a state court, wills, trusts, and estates, and also the right to child support. So I'd like to point out, and I just wanted to point out, it's so interesting because when I was in the legislature, you don't have, your jobs are so busy and so overwhelming, and you don't have time to sit and read Supreme Court decisions. But they leave these juicy little nuggets in there, like these notes. And I'm like, I don't know why, like, nobody ever wrapped up the note and just stuck it in our mailbox and let us know, like, the Supreme Court is literally writing to you. And they say things such as "Justice Wecht." So I just, I put them in, not, just so that, they're just so interesting. So "Justice Wecht, in 2024, the General Assembly should act," like, nobody tells you, right? "The common law approach has left courts to parse a fine-grained differences in an attempt to achieve just results in individual cases." So it's just case by case. Then we have Justice Saylor back in 2012 stating, "Recognizing the continuing viability of the common law doctrines in the absence of definitive legislative involvement." So that was him back in 2012. Also, Justice Dougherty, he had a concurrence in 2018 with Justice Mundy. So in that opinion that they did together, he stated, he was talking about potential harms of defining parentage, traditional notions of biology and adoption. So the court is struggling with this, how technology, we've not kept up, the law has not kept up with technology. And so he stated, particularly in the absence of any guidance from the legislature. So I thought that one was interesting. And then again, going on, "The legislature's inaction to date is not an impediment to our own obligation to resolve the specific cases before us by developing a consistent and coherent approach to defining parenthood within the construct that the legislature has given us." So I put that one in there, and then there's a quote from Glover v. Junior. So they're all in my remarks. And those are just notes that I wanted to put forward. And just to reiterate, I just put those in there just because I found that to be of interest, because they were never given to us, and there's not a lot of inter-branch work that goes on. So I thought, as sitting representatives, that would interest you. So in closing, a mere four years ago, I was proudly sitting on this very committee, which it was no secret, it was my favorite committee, I had you have to say that. And you have such tough work in this committee, and there's so much need in the state of Pennsylvania. So I'm so honored to be here before you today. And best wishes to all of you for your work for children in Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's always great to see you back at the Capitol. Our next speaker is Rebecca Levin-Niack.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair McNeil, Chair Clunk, and committee members. My name's Rebecca Levin-Niack. I'm an adoption and assisted reproduction attorney in Montgomery County, as well as mom of three school-aged children, all who were conceived with the assistance of assisted reproduction. I'm also co-chair of the Parentage Committee of the Pennsylvania Bar Association, immediate past chair of the Philadelphia Family Law Section, and a fellow of the Academy of Adoption and Assisted Reproduction Attorneys. It's hard. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today in strong support of Pennsylvania House Bill 350, the Uniform Parentage Act. This bill is a necessary update to Pennsylvania law. As Judge Toohill said, "Pennsylvania currently has no comprehensive statutory scheme that ensures the protection of parental rights of all children, including children born through assisted reproduction. As a result, families across the Commonwealth face inconsistent legal outcomes, often depending on the county or even the specific judge to which their case is assigned. This lack of clarity places children at risk by leaving their parentage uncertain. House Bill 350 is modeled on the Uniform Parentage Act, best-practice model legislation developed by the Uniform Law Commission. Pennsylvania's version also codifies key Pennsylvania precedent, bringing much-needed consistency and predictability to our legal system. For decades, again as Judge Toohill said, the Pennsylvania courts have asked the legislature to provide statutory guidance to ensure protection for children and consistency across the state. This bill addresses that call. House Bill 350 establishes a clear, accessible, and consistent framework for determining legal parentage, ensuring protections for all children, regardless of the circumstances of the birth or their parent's marital status, gender, or sexual orientation. The bill includes these following key provisions. It ensures that all Pennsylvania's children have equal access to parent-child relationships. It expands voluntary acknowledgements of parentage, which provide an administrative route to parentage. Voluntary acknowledgements of parentage are a simple administrative route to legal parentage that receives full faith and credit. The bill would also clarify the paths to establish parentage through birth, acknowledgement, adjudication, presumption, de facto parentage, consent to assisted reproduction, or through surrogacy. And it also provides much-needed guidance as to how to establish parentage under each path. It provides standards for establishing parentage for children born through assisted reproduction, codifying key Pennsylvania court precedent, such as Ferguson versus McKernan, a Pennsylvania Supreme Court case regarding the legal status of a known sperm donor, and Baby S, a Superior Court case addressing parentage in the surrogacy context. Importantly, House Bill 350 is also consistent with the recent March 20 Supreme Court decision in Glover versus Junior, which firmly established the doctrine of intent-based parentage in the Commonwealth. In Glover, the court recognized that parentage can be determined not only by biology or marital presumption, but also by the intent to bring a child into the world and be a parent. This bill would give courts and families the tools they need to apply Glover's holding with consistency in an equitable way. The bill does not change any existing custody or child support laws. Rather, it would ensure greater efficiency and consistency in our courts and reduce unnecessary litigation. While these legal concepts may seem abstract, they have a very real and immediate impact on families across the Commonwealth. While there are many stories that I could share to relate how legal gaps affect people in deeply personal ways, I want to share with you today one story by way of illustration. I've changed the names for confidentiality purposes. Chris and Sarah spent five years undergoing fertility treatment, 10 egg retrievals, five hysteroscopies. And ultimately, they needed the assistance of an egg donor and gestational carrier to build their family. Their baby is due next month. I was retained to obtain a court order, ensuring both of their names would appear on the birth certificate. However, despite existing Department of Health guidance, the judge who we were assigned to deviated from standard practice by only recognizing Chris as the legal parent of the child and stating that the mother should be listed on the birth certificate as unknown. Sarah was heartbroken. After years of IVF and coming to terms that she would not be a biological parent to her child, the court's order reinforced her deepest fear that she would not be a real parent to the child that she had longed for and planned for for so long. This ruling leaves the child vulnerable as well, with only one legally-recognized parent at birth. If Chris were to pass away, the child would be legally orphaned, and Sarah would not be able to make crucial medical decisions for the child. If Pennsylvania had enacted House Bill 350 while Chris and Sarah were planning their family, this outcome would have been prevented, because the bill makes clear that both intended parents are legal parents from birth, and their name would have appeared on their original birth certificate. In conclusion, House Bill 350 provides protections for children and families across Pennsylvania and modernizes our law, allows Pennsylvania with national best-practice standards, and ensures that all children, regardless of how they are conceived, have legally-recognized parents. I urge this committee and the rest of the Pennsylvania legislature to support House Bill 350 and ensure Pennsylvania's parentage law reflects the realities of all of our families while prioritizing the best interests of children. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next testifier is Darren Holst. Please come up to the table.
I'm here. I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Usually, the bald head gives it away. It glares the light.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair McNeil, Minority Chair Clunk, and members of the House Children and Youth Committee. Thank you for considering this vital legislation and for the opportunity to offer testimony here today. I am Darren Holst. I am testifying today on behalf of the Pennsylvania Bar Association, which has over 20,000 members and represents attorneys from all 67 counties within the Commonwealth. I previously had the privilege to serve as Chair of the Family Law Section of the PBA, which has almost 900 members. I'm also a fellow in the American Academy of Matrimonial Lawyers, as well as a fellow in the International Academy of Family Lawyers. But I'm also here today as someone who owes the very existence of his family to assisted reproduction technology, or ART for short. My wife and I are the proud parents of a 15-year-old born through IVF. I know firsthand both the significance of the technology at the heart of HB 350 and the urgency for legislation that collectively protects children and the families seeking to have a family. Protecting and advancing the best interests of children is what we, as family law attorneys, are ethically obligated to do. And I know it is what U.S. legislators are bound to achieve when passing child-centered legislation like HB 350. The PBA strongly supports HB 350. I will echo mainly what Judges Toohill and Attorney Niack have said about the bill, but it does codify a framework for establishing the existence of a parent-child relationship and, more importantly, modernizes archaic laws that currently fail to reflect the evolving modern family. And that leaves countless children, parents, and families potentially legally exposed. Allowing that unnecessary legal exposure to continue is something we, as family law attorneys, cannot countenance, nor should you. Allowing, or I should say, the update to the Pennsylvania law ensures that individuals who want to have children and who want to start families through both natural processes and assisted processes establish secure legal ties. and assisted processes establish secure legal ties to their children. This is true regardless of whether the family is a same-sex couple or an opposite-sex couple. HB 350 protects all children. As both Attorney Niack and Judge Toohill indicated, HB 350 does codify intent-based parentage, which buttresses the recent opinion from Glover versus Junior. I will not repeat what the both have said about that, but it's important to understand that this bill also includes definitions for acknowledged parent, adjudicated parent, alleged genetic parent, and presumed parent. And it encompasses alternative ways in which an individual may become a parent. This legislation does not substantively change Pennsylvania's current custody or child support law, nor does it change trust and estate laws that are unrelated to the determination of parentage. That is what HB 350 does. It discusses parentage of children. Further, this legislation protects donors and surrogates who play critical roles in the ART process. As is often the case, technology moves faster than the law. And for too long, Pennsylvania's parentage laws have been outpaced by science and technology. This bill provides comprehensive rules regarding surrogacy agreements, pardon me, something that has been notably absent within this Commonwealth. HB 350 requires surrogacy agreements to include provisions that detail the intended parent's responsibility for legal and medical expenses of the surrogate, protects the surrogate's autonomy over health and welfare decisions, and it outlines when and how an agreement may be terminated, and also outlines available remedies for breaches of the agreement. By codifying these much-needed rules, it streamlines the surrogacy process, which that provides security, it maintains consistency, and protects children born under such arrangements. As a family law practitioner who works regularly with families and children, I can unequivocally state that the protections provided by HB 350 in its entirety and the framework it outlines are essential for our modern society and the families who comprise that society. These are families who, like me 15 years ago, want a family, want to start a family, are desperate to start a family. But without the technology and without the protections that it affords through this bill, they are left legally exposed. And that, as Judge Toohill indicated, creates litigation that creates time, time that could be used parenting these children, having relationships, but they're involved in litigation. And that is to the detriment of the child. That is something we cannot condone. This clarity allows parents to focus on starting and expanding their families rather than preparing for potential legal complications. As I said, this bill ensures that all children's relationships are protected irrespective of the manner of their birth. HB 350 will ensure that Pennsylvania's citizens have access to simple and secure processes to establish parentage. The bill provides guidance and security for surrogacy process. It consolidates the law with respect to parentage of a child. And as a whole, it affords comprehensive protection for parents, and most importantly, their children. You eliminate one facet of the bill, and you risk losing those protections either in part or in full. HB 350, as a collective, protects all children born in Pennsylvania, whether or not they were conceived through ART. Collaboration between the PBA and the General Assembly has regularly resulted in improvements to the laws that serve the families of our Commonwealth. As a representative of the PBA, I thank you for your continued partnership and the opportunity to work with you to enact HB 350 and afford critical protections to the children of our Commonwealth. Both individually and as a representative of the PBA, I ask that the members of the General Assembly enact HB 350. Thank you again for the opportunity to share this testimony this morning.
Thank you for your testimony. Our final testifier today is Dr. Andrea Braverman.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today, Chairwoman McNeil and Minority Chairwoman Klunk. My name is Andrea Braverman, and as you heard, I'm a PhD clinical professor in both obstetrics and gynecology. I am not a gynecologist. Everybody gets mixed up with that, as well as a clinical professor in psychiatry and human behavior at Thomas Jefferson University. I'm also the conference director of the Jones Fertility, the Jones Foundation Infertility Counseling Conference, which just occurred last week in Philadelphia, which is the leading national conference training mental health specialists in infertility and family-building counseling. But I'm not here for my day job. I'm here to share my story with you. Having children was always a fundamental goal in my life. I met my late husband at age 25, and from the start, we understood that our journey to parenthood would not be straightforward due to his medical history. With the support of medical advancements, we are fortunate, we were fortunate to conceive our two daughters and enjoyed nearly 40 years of marriage together. Today, our family continues to grow through the next generation, a source of profound joy and gratitude. When I began my own family-building journey, I was in graduate school training to become a clinical psychologist. Facing the challenges of infertility firsthand, I turned to academic resources in search of guidance, actually, the card catalog, for those of you who remember, only to find little information available. At that time, online searches just didn't exist, and even traditional library, other library resources were limited. Sorry. That was the most important part of my testimony, and now it's not recorded. This personal experience sparked a professional path that would shape my career. A few years after the birth of our second daughter, my best friend and her husband faced infertility struggles of their own, encountering repeated disappointments in both assisted reproduction and adoption. Witnessing their heartbreak, my husband and I deeply empathized with their longing for a child to complete their family. Without hesitation, I offered to donate my eggs to her, a decision that resulted in the birth of two incredible children who are now thriving 32-year-old adults. At that time, legal protections surrounding egg donation were virtually nonexistent, leaving their family vulnerable. Fortunately, our close bond and trust allowed us to navigate this uncharted territory successfully. And being a clinical psychologist in the field didn't hurt either. Today, our children share a unique connection, affectionately referring to one another as "secret half siblings" since first learning about their biological ties in their teenage years. Through my work, I've seen firsthand how many families face legal uncertainties that leave them unprotected. Every child deserves the security of a legally-recognized family. And as a psychologist, I know that love and stability are the foundations of a child's well-being. For nearly four decades, I've been privileged to work in the field of family building, supporting intended parents of all backgrounds, gay, straight, single, untied by the common, united by the common goal of becoming loving parents and nurturing the next generation. Over the years, I've witnessed the emotional toll of legal uncertainty on families who simply wish to protect their children. Unfortunately, legislation has consistently lagged behind, as we have heard, the advances in healthcare and the needs of the family. Assisted reproduction through sperm donors, egg donors, embryo donors, and gestational surrogacy is often thought as an option for only certain individuals. However, my clinical work has shown me that families come together in many ways, through assisted reproduction, adoption, remarriage, guardianship due to parental illness or loss, and countless other circumstances. Infertility itself presents enough challenges, with individuals and couples already enduring the emotional and physical toll of trying to build their families. Too often, they must also navigate complex legal landscapes, worrying about whether their children will be legally secured with their family. There is never a shortage of work in my field to help these families. In middle school, we are taught the basics of human reproduction. Yet, little is said about the reality that one in six couples will face fertility struggles. Research by Boivin and others estimate infertility prevalence ranges from 3.5% to 16.7% in developed nations, affecting, and this is a staggering number, 72 million of women worldwide. I share my story not because it's exceptional, but because it's one of many. It is a story with a joyful outcome, one that highlights the importance of legal protections for all families. Decades later, my best friend and I remain close. Having dinner tomorrow. And of all the things I've done in my life, I'm most proud of helping her and her husband become parents. When we made that decision, we were unaware of legal vulnerabilities. Sorry, we never even talked to a lawyer. But we were fortunate to navigate them in a time that was perhaps more trusting. Today, I advocate for every family to have the same security and protections that my own family was privileged to experience. Every parent deserves the peace of mind that their family is legally-recognized, protected, and valued regardless of how it was built. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braverman. Before we open the floor for questions, I want to highlight that in your committee binders, you'll find the bios of today's testifiers, along with additional written testimonies from individuals who could not be with us today due to time constraints. All testimony has been uploaded to the committee's SharePoint website under public hearings. We will now open the floor for questions. Chair Klunk, do you have any questions?
I'll go at the end. I'll let my members.
Okay. Representative Schlegel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate our testifiers being with us today, and I appreciate your testimony here today, and the written testimony was very clear. So thank you very much for that. Am I correct that House Bill 350 defines who is or who are the parents of individuals who wish to form a family through the practice of artificial reproductive technology? Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
It really was a simple question, but I wanted to make sure that I fully understood that.
Yes, egg donors, sperm donors, embryo donors, and surrogacy are all encompassed within the bill, in detail, too. I think the length of the bill gives you how much thought the Uniform Law Commission and the Uniform Parentage Act has put into clearly making it clear exactly how those parentage would operate under those different technologies.
Yeah, I didn't intend this to be a trick question. It really was pretty straightforward, but I wanted to make sure that I understood it fully. I was particularly also interested in a statement written by, from the Pennsylvania Bar Association, which reads in the written testimony, "A goal of any family law attorney should be to minimize a family's involvement in the judicial system." And one other statement was, "Collaboration between the Pennsylvania Bar Association and the General Assembly has regularly resulted in improvements to the laws that serve families in our Commonwealth." I really appreciate those comments, and thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Representative Parker.
Thank you so much for your testimony and a lot of your heartfelt stories. I always get nervous when I hear these conversations, and I try to report back home to my husband because he always then gets nervous when I come back home to say, "What are we talking about, wife? What are you doing? What are we saying?" So I have the preference to always that first. When we're having these kind of discussions, and I am a bonus mother of five and a bonus grandmother of six, I never use the word "step," okay? I just want them to know that we are all family and we all love. But help me understand, in the world of infertility and how you all to, you know, how to have children, it sounds very expensive. And how are individuals able to afford that? And is it covered by insurance?
So to answer that question, there are different ways that people form families. I'll give the example of a donor. Because right now, for people who don't have a lot of resources, they're the most vulnerable without this bill. If someone is using a friend as a known donor outside of a doctor's office who hasn't gone to an attorney to get a legal contract in place, but they've had conversations that, you know, "You're going to be our donor, and we're doing this at home free, you know, very cheaply," they're the most vulnerable because they're probably not going to have a contract, there's going to be no paper trail with a doctor. But this bill would allow for them to create any written instrument that says what their intent is. And then, instead of having to, you know, confirm parental rights through an adoption process post-birth, they could sign a voluntary acknowledgement of parentage, just like we have voluntary acknowledgements of paternity now, and have a free, cheap, simple way. And so this bill would actually make things more of an even playing field for people who have resources and don't have resources. Another, for example, surrogacy. Gestational surrogacy is very expensive. And that's where someone is carrying a pregnancy without their own egg. This would allow more people access to surrogacy because it also would have provisions regarding genetic surrogacy, where you can, where the person carrying the pregnancy, it's also their own egg, but they have gone into that pregnancy with the intent to not be a parent. And right now, again, doing medical procedures through insemination as opposed to having to do, create embryos, is much less expensive. And so, yes, it is expensive, but this would take away some of the burdens and certainly some of the legal hurdles.
I appreciate you for your, I'm not saying I'm volunteer for surrogacy, please. I just want to be clear on the record. I didn't say that. I just want, just to help you out, because, again, this is not my lane. But as a lawmaker, I just needed clarity when you're talking about this. So I just appreciate it, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Representative Day.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you all for your testimony. I appreciate it. This is interesting, and your testimony was helpful. I have too many questions, so I'm trying to pick which the best one is to ask today. The first, maybe a quick question and answer is, if parentage was determined in case law in Glover, then, you know, our colleagues are going to ask us, what is the need for this then, just to codify it in statute what Glover was? Or is there a need to define it differently?
That's only one facet of the bill. I mean, this bill, again, you have to look at the bill collectively. It establishes intent-based parentage, which was a way in which to establish parentage, which Glover finally found. But it's much more than that. The bill talks about surrogacy agreements. It protects sperm donors, egg donors. So you can't just put blinders on and say, "Well, if the Supreme Court has already found in Glover versus Junior that there's intent-based parentage, then why do we need this bill?"
So that was a piece of the answer. I appreciate your answer. That helps me understand, you know, and I think there was testimony about it being, it was either you or the judge that testified today to that. So I apologize for making you say that again. But my other question was, Madam Chair, may I just, that was, may I ask another question? Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Does the intent-based parentage, I was trying to read through the bill. We just got this on Monday, so I apologize. There's different pieces of it where you can establish parentage and the responsibilities of allowing, giving people the opportunity to establish parentage. I've seen that, but I haven't seen, I haven't read it all the way through the whole bill, proposed bill. But when you, when you're trying to declare intent-based parentage, does it give the non-biological intended parent, do they have the rights to decision-making and also the responsibilities of parentage during pregnancy, like when after the technology is completed? And is it during, there's other comments in here about, I forget what the phrase is, after born, after born child or? So I'm trying to understand, where does that line come in of rights of decision-making of the child and responsibilities, you know, which could be financial or just parentage responsibilities? Where does that come in in this bill?
Generally, those come in once a child is born. And so, this does not, you know, this bill remains, you know, autonomy for women to make the same decisions that they would make, whether, you know, their spouse or partner were a genetic parent to the child. You know, that all remains the same. It's on parity with people who would be, you know, two genetic parents. This is just saying that once that child is born, you know, if, for example, the person giving birth has a medical issue, and there's another parent who's not genetically related to that child, from the moment of birth, they can make medical decisions for their child, they can have their child on insurance. If they were to pass away, their child would be entitled to benefits related to them, you know, even if they passed away, you know, if the child was conceived, say, with a sperm donor, the father who didn't have sperm passed away, the child would still be able to receive benefits. to receive benefits from him.
And a quick follow-up, do traditional biological parents, if they don't establish intended parentage, would they have the ability to, you know, not have the rights and responsibilities of being a parent?
No, if you're a genetic parent, you're, you know, if you've brought a child into the world, you know, genetically, you're responsible for this child. And this would make it clear that if you brought in the child into this world, you know, regardless of whether your genetic connection, that you're a parent, and that actually was the baby S case, the Superior Court case regarding surrogacy, it was regarding an intended mother who was not genetically related to the child, and she sought, her and her husband separated, he was genetically related to the child, she tried to walk away from the child and say she had no support obligations. And the Superior Court, following trial in Montgomery County, went up to Superior Court, they said, "You're responsible for bringing this child in the world, and you're responsible for financially supporting this child as well."
And you don't think this bill would change that? I just.
No, this bill would reinforce that and provide us with details that we are missing currently as to how, you know, how these surrogacy agreements operate, what should be in them, and procedures for making sure that uniformly across the Commonwealth, we're getting court orders with intended parents' names on them.
I think of this bill as filling in the gaps and expanding it to ensure protections for all children, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Representative Curry.
Thank you, everyone, for your testimony today, and thank you for the bravery of coming to have this conversation, because I know that it's a difficult situation in many cases when I think about parentage. Representative Day talked about the biological, but, you know, the law is not clear to a lot of people. If you have a child that's biological between two parents and one parent dies, the courts make you do things like set up a guardian. And that's not clear when you're on your birthing journey, and you don't know if somebody's going to die and what you'll have to do. So this is an important conversation because usually when you have a baby, particularly for the women in the room, because we're the ones that bring forth the babies, you know, you think that they're yours. And for some reason, the state doesn't really think that they're yours. There's things that are put in place that kind of, you wouldn't know until something happens. So with that being said, this is a really sensitive topic for me and my family because we know that when there's a surrogacy put in place, we're really excited for the baby, right? But if that family doesn't stay together, and this is for, I guess, I'm sorry, I'm trying to formulate my question, for out-of-state, so this is a state-by-state complication. So if there is, say, a family member who lives in Delaware, that family separates, the one family member moves to a different state, how then does this particular bill help with that? Because it seems like this is state-by-state, but what happens when the lines get crossed and, you know, custody goes into place that way?
I can answer with regard to surrogacy. So the parentage orders that we get and other states, you know, in the vast majority of states, there is some, you know, surrogacy is happening in pretty much every state in the United States. And there is involving interstate travel. And, you know, the states have different procedures. Pennsylvania has been a pre-birth order state through our administrative process. Other states like Virginia have a post-birth order process, but the majority of states are pre-birth orders. Those court orders receive full faith and credit in other states. So if I have an order from Pennsylvania, and then I go and move to New Jersey, I'm going to be recognized as a parent. And then, parent, any custody proceeding following that would be the same as any other custody proceeding, you know, where, you know, where the court, whatever state it is, is looking at their best interest factors, and custody would continue to be governed under the UCC JEA.
With that being said, really quickly, a lot of times these surrogacy situations are kept quiet from families. So if something happens where one of the people dies, particularly the mother who carries the baby, and then the other family members don't know that that was a surrogacy situation, and then it comes out, then are there people to help?
Dr. Braverman.
Yeah, just curious.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of work that goes in before these arrangements, and this is where our medical colleagues come to play. I mean, to be honest with you, more, the most responsible approach would never be to let a surrogate who's not going to share this with their family go ahead. It's for all the reasons that you're suggesting. But there is, people don't just show up saying, "I have nothing better to do. I think I'll be a surrogate today." I mean, there is a process that they must follow. And then, there are those of us who are there and available throughout the journey and postpartum.
If I can just, really quickly, Representative Curry, not with regard to surrogacy, but you bring up a good point, because the families that come before the court, they're moving so often. So we have military families with paternity questions where someone is overseas and wife conceives a child. We have marriages in different states. Families are always moving in custody courts. So I'll have, I mean, one of the things that we do all month long is people apply for relocation, and that's 10 factors that the trial court has to do. And then another 16 factors, if we're deciding primary, if the parent is going to have primary physical and move to go to Florida or move to Texas. So it does come up a lot, and so uniformity could be helpful since the states that we're dealing with, and we have questions of, you know, who is the parent? And you're taking testimony that was what happened. Were you married in Florida? Were you not married? Could you have been married? So it's really, it's something that comes before the county court often.
I was simply going to add that, oh, sorry, that since this bill deals with parentages and establishes parentage, then that provides security to those individuals. If there is a relocation matter, they've got rights, they can come into court, they can get custody, they're not left out in the cold. This bill establishes parentage, which gives then those further rights to the children, or I don't want to say to the children, but for the children in relocation matters, subsequent custody matters, et cetera.
Thank you. Representative Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question regarding the surrogacy agreement that's in the bill. Would it be correct to say the surrogacy agreement cannot infringe on the surrogate's ability to have an abortion?
That is correct. It cannot.
It cannot.
It remains, yeah. And it states specifically that the pregnant person has all decision, bodily autonomy decisions.
So if the surrogate aborts the pregnancy, would it be a breach of the agreement?
It would not be, because she still has autonomy over her body.
Okay, so if it's not a breach of the agreement, is it a termination of the agreement then?
The agreement itself can, so cannot say that she cannot have a termination or that she has to have one. And if she, you know, if the intended parents were requesting that she terminate the pregnancy, and she said no, that would not be a breach, and they would still be responsible for the child. They would still be the parents of the child.
Okay, so if it's a termination, like, if any, what damages can the intended parents get for the termination of that agreement?
Generally, they would, you know, if it was a compensated arrangement, there might be a provision that there would be no further compensation, but there really are not, you know, because the bill was, by the ULC, was drafted very carefully to maintain women's bodily autonomy, there really would not be a strong remedy. But these arrangements, and Dr. Braverman can talk about that, are relationships of trust. There's a huge amount of trust that goes into, you know, being in the position where your opportunity to become a parent relies on someone else carrying the pregnancy, that you are really placing, you know, your child, you know, that's going to be born with someone else. And so in practice, I see these as very, you know, warm relationships where people are really trusting someone. And the women who are coming forward, you know, a lot of them are in the helping professions, nurses, teachers, who really have enjoyed their pregnancy experiences and are, you know, seeing their friends or families or, you know, others in the world who are struggling with fertility and that they feel that they have this gift that they can bring. And so, in practice, I see people really coming into this for the right reasons and having a very trusting relationship. But this bill provides guardrails on that. For example, it says, you know, a surrogate has to be over the age of 21. You know, it says that there needs to be some mental health consultations and medical evaluations. And so, you know, all of these things are best practices now. They're what fertility clinics that are following best practices are doing. But I think having a statute that codifies it would make sure that we eliminate any practices that, you know, aren't saying, "Okay, you don't have to have a mental health evaluation. You know, you don't have to have a medical evaluation. We can have an 18-year-old carry a pregnancy." That, you know, this bill provides some guardrails.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Representative Krajewski.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. And I'd like to thank you all for your testimony and expertise today, and the maker of the bill for bringing this issue. I think this is an important continued step in recognizing alternative family structures and providing a legal framework for that. So I appreciate you all bringing your expertise. My question is, I know a lot of the conversation today has been about families conceived via surrogacy or IVF, but I'm curious about what are, kind of, because I know this is a more comprehensive legal framework for expanding recognition of families and a variety of structures. So I'm just curious about in your lines of work, what are some of the other loopholes and pitfalls you see for alternative families or different kind of parental structures beyond just surrogacy and IVF? Because I can assume that there are other scenarios where there's not kind of the typical nuclear family structure, where you have people who need a little bit more latitude in terms of legal parental rights. So if you could just lay out maybe like what some of those other categories are or structures are, I think that would be helpful for me to know for sure and for our committee.
You're looking at me. I'm the assisted reproduction attorney. But I mean, certainly there, you know, it has some parts about de facto parentage. So, you know, where someone could, you know, right now in Pennsylvania, we have the doctrine of in loco parentis. That's a case law theory where someone has, you know, stepped into a parental role, they're given standing and custody, but they're short of a full legal parent. And so this would allow for a situation where someone has stepped into a parental role. Maybe it's parents who are out of the picture because of, you know, drug addiction, other reasons that they may not be able to actively parent. Someone has come into that role and parented, whether that's a family member, you know, neighbor, sister, you know, that they could be a de facto parent, meaning a full parent, as opposed to in loco parentis, which we have now, which is short of that because it wouldn't have access to some of the rights and benefits that a full legal parent has.
So like an uncle or an aunt, or even like would this cover, say, you have like an eldest, like, child, and maybe, you know, both of the parents have deceased, is this like something where this would give them greater legal protections?
There could be, you know, de facto parentage established in a situation like that if they're truly acting as a parent.
And I was simply going to add, you mentioned surrogacy agreements and IVF, but don't forget, as Attorney Nyack was talking about, a lot of the people who don't have the resources to expend the money go through informal processes such as informal sperm donation. So this bill, you know, provides protection there.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Boyd.
I know we are ending on time here really quickly, but thank you all for coming. And I want to thank some of the advocates who came to me early this week to help me understand this. This is new territory for me, so I'm going to be spending a lot of time in this 86-page bill, so you'll probably get more questions. I do, I was interested, Judge Toohill, you said, and I think you kind of said it in passing as this wasn't addressing this, but we in Pennsylvania have assumed parentage in marriage. So right now, you mentioned something about like, you know, if you're married, the assumption is that the father is your husband or whatever. And that's not always the case, obviously, and it's often, I'm sure that's why it comes in front of you. Does that, if marriage assumes that, there's certain assumptions and put it in place there, why have we not, or is it a discrepancy or an inequality that we have marriage equality now for same-sex marriages? Why aren't those parents who are married assumed parents in the same way? Is it just assumed, a sexual intercourse assumption? Or, you know, why doesn't that already, why doesn't marriage cover that, I guess, the way it does for what you were, in our current situation?
So the attorney can better, you can better.
Okay, I'll start answering it now. So there actually was a case, AM, and it was in the dependency context, where it involved whether a, it was a couple that, you know, had used assisted reproduction to conceive, and the case was about whether the husband in that case, who was not genetically related to, or the child, had standing as a parent to participate in those proceedings. And that, you know, and the court, it was after marriage equality, and the court looked at that and said, "The marital presumption applies uniformly to same-sex couples and opposite-sex couples." But in that, but our marital presumption in Pennsylvania is sort of unique in that our case law says that the presumption holds only while the marriage is intact. So if there is not an intact marriage, when you need it the most, you can't rely on it. And so, this, you know, that was exactly the case of Glover versus Junior, that it was a couple who split up before their child was born. There was not an intact marriage to preserve, and that's really the public policy behind our marriage, our marital presumption, is preventing marriages from outside attack. And what the case law says is when there's not a marriage, you know, to prevent from outside attack, we don't, we don't look at it. So in that case, AM, the whole case was about, is this an intact marriage or not? And that's, you know, and they found that at the end of the day, that particular marriage, they found, even though it was rocky, was intact. But if the court had found it was not intact, that father would have not been able to participate in the dependency proceedings. And I'll let you add on.
That, in the Glover case, it was interesting because the two women that went through all of the IVF, went through sperm donation, they had a doula that they had hired, there was a baby shower planned, they were a married couple in Pennsylvania, but the court did not apply the presumption of parentage in that marriage. So it's always on a case-by-case basis, so there's just hours of testimony where someone will say, "We weren't a happily married couple. I was filing for divorce. We weren't together." So you, the judge has to take hours of testimony on whether it even is an intact marriage or not. So it takes up a lot of the court's time, so that's where definitions could be, could be helpful. I mean, I think there's always going to be litigation, but what Representative Day was putting forward about, didn't Glover just fix this, so now there is intent-based parentage? There's still going to be, one parent is going to say, "We're not a Glover case," and the other parent or someone that's trying to be a parent is going to say, "Yes, we are the Glover case." So that will go before the courts, and, you know, that's three years and a lot of time that was put before the courts with heavy dockets.
Well, thank you. That's fascinating, and I think you've taught us so much today, a lot of us. I do want to just ask very quickly as a follow-up. Thank you for bringing those remarks from the judges in those cases that are meant to come to us. Is there a way to make that clearer? Can we get those more regularly? I mean, talk about a miscommunication that's happening. How do we get hold of those more regularly?
I don't know. So AOPC is here with me. We have a legislative liaison, and we do have a legislative committee in the trial court. So I'm on the legislative committee, which I'm appointed by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court to be on that committee. And we are, the judiciary is just always hesitant to say anything because we're such separate branches. So it's usually in a formal setting like this. But maybe somebody could put together, maybe the PBA could do more articles on it, I don't know, in your spare time. But it is interesting, I think, to see those in there. And that Glover case is just really something you could obsess over because it's so interesting to read the different opinions.
Thank you. Chair Clunk, would you like to finish with questioning?
Sure, thank you. So to the attorneys, would this bill, the Uniform Parentage Act, allow a woman under a genetic or a gestational agreement to accept money in exchange for the child, whether or not the child is biologically their own? So this, so in surrogacy, the payments are not So this, so in surrogacy, you're, the payments are not payments for the product of a child, that they specifically should not be tied to the outcome of the pregnancy. And so in surrogacy agreements that we see now, that people are entering every day in Pennsylvania and other states, usually there is, you know, sometimes people are doing this completely altruistically and the agreement is only covering their expenses for childcare if they're going to a doctor's appointment, things like that. But in others, there is a compensation schedule that is tied to the labor of carrying a pregnancy, the time involved, things like that. It is specifically tied to the months of pregnancy. And so what I would never see, what would be unethical, that I would not allow in any agreement that I was drafting, would be a lump sum payment at the end of the pregnancy for a child. That is not ethical, but what, you know, so, and I always say that specifically, this cannot be tied. If there's a miscarriage in the fourth month of pregnancy, that will not change the compensation. If there's a stillbirth, that will not change the compensation in the agreement. So it's not tied to the child themselves.
Thank you for that clarification. And if I may, Madam Chair, another question I had was relating to the factors, and I know we've had a lot of factors discussions here in the legislature regarding family law recently. So in reading through the factors to determine, and determine parentage, the court will look through six different factors, and there's an and at the end. So I'm assuming all of those factors will be weighted equally? How, how will those factors be weighted? Am I interpreting that correctly, that they will be weighted equally? And if not, how, under this bill, under these factors, will they be interpreted by a court for parentage?
So the way that we do the factors, like right now in custody, the 16 factors, we have to go through and weigh each. So sometimes it's not applicable, sometimes it's neutral, like mom and dad are exactly the same weight for mom and dad. Like a lot of times it's equal with mom and dad, but it's only with a certain, say if it's a mom and dad scenario. Usually it's like there's six people in the caption, we've got grandma, an aunt, a mom, a dad, there's a lot of, of folks in, in the caption sometimes. But if it's, so we go through, if it's in the statute, we have to weigh, we have to go through each one, and if you skip one, you can get appealed and the case will get sent back to you. So it's neutral or each one is weighed. So I, I guess they don't end up weighing equally, but we have to go through if it's an and. Is that how you're looking at it with the, I don't have that page-
Yeah, I think this is in Article, what article is this, probably six, where it talks about the factors for competing claims of parentage.
Yes. So the age of the child, the length of time during which each individual assumed the role of parent of the child, those, those factors.
So you wouldn't be able to skip, like, that's how I would look at it. You, you can't skip any of them, and if you do, it would be reversible error?
Correct. I mean, you have to consider all the factors to which, to the extent they are applicable. Some factors may not be applicable. And again, Rebecca can correct me, but I don't think the legislation says anything about one being weighted more heavily than the other. They're all to be considered to the extent they are relevant.
Yes, agree.
Thank you. I know we're on time, so I'll ask my other questions individually. Thank you.
That'd be great. We, this is an extremely important topic and we don't want to rush it, but then we also have other obligations. I want to thank you all for taking the time to be here. And Representative Sanchez, who is a prime sponsor, is here for some words.
Thank you, Chair McNeil, and thank you to Chair Clunk as well for holding this hearing today. And I will be brief in the interest of time, I know we have to get to session. And I do want to give my thanks to all the members of the committee for your great questions, really insightful, and certainly willing to follow up, and I'll, and I'll say more on that, too. And want to thank the committee staff for all of your efforts and, and many of the folks in the room here that have been putting this together. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank, we have four co-prime sponsors on this, Representative Cheryl Delogier, who is here today as well. I thank her for co-priming this, along with Chair McNeil and Representative Dan Miller as well. And to our esteemed panel, wow, this is, you know, what an assembly of experts, you know, kudos to, to those who put together all of these minds and really appreciate all of your insights and especially not to single you out, Judge Toohill, you've got such a unique perspective, having been on both, you know, in two branches of government and really can't thank you enough for all of your efforts. I know you've been speaking publicly about this in other forums, too. So hearing from all the practitioners that, you know, are in support of this, incredibly helpful in answering the questions and, and showing the need for this in an area of the law. And I, I think kind of the, you know, the top-line takeaway, I know this is a lot, is that this just really provides the clarity and certainty and consistency and predictability that is needed in the law. So I know it's hard to distill 86 pages, I think, into, into a top line or a bottom line, but I certainly welcome anyone, any of the members to contact me personally if you have further questions. And, you know, if I can't answer that, I will certainly get you an answer from the experts. So, you know, I know, again, I know it's a lot, but hopefully, we, we did pass this last hot year in the House, but unfortunately, it didn't make it through in the Senate, so we're hoping to get some more momentum and, and get that done. And we're certainly willing to put the, the work into addressing everyone's questions. So again, thank you all, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Representative Sanchez, and thank you for your offer of asking questions afterwards. If everyone is okay with that, we will hold on that. Chair Clunk, do you have any closing remarks?
Just thanking our panel, this is a very important topic, but one that is rather complicated. So we look forward to continuing the conversation as we work through the bill, and I hope we can continue to have a working relationship as we continue to have questions. So thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you all again for, for being here, and Representative Sanchez for introducing this. If there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Representative Curry, thank you. And a second would be Representative Sanchez. We are adjourned. Thank you.